Okay, this is May 17th, 2017, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Before we get to the business of the day, there's been a tragic loss in the Oyster River community, the death of Miles Goldberg and Jay Richard. Is he here?
Yes.
Would you just say, maybe say a few words?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we all know, it was a very, very sad loss for the Oyster River community over a week ago. I was fortunate to attend the memorial service last Wednesday, a week ago, and it was, you know, a true reflection of what Miles brought to this community in terms of the amount of people who attended. That was easily probably a thousand people. There really are no words to properly express what Miles meant to our school community. He was a special person and a very special student, and it's one of those things, as principal, you're fortunate to get to meet people like him who are a lot smarter than me, and I think the true loss is what he could have brought to us in the future, because again, he was just a bright, special, special person. And I do want his family to know and you to know as a school board, all the people affected, including my students, will continue to support them in the future and as well as his family. So, thank you.
Can we maybe just have a moment of silence to reflect on this loss to our community? Thank you. Moving to the approval of the agenda, I would like to just suggest one change if it's agreeable to the board. Alexander Chase was here, right? If we move you up after the presentation on the China trip. So, I don't know if you have an agenda, but not to have you -- I know that's going to be terrifically interesting for you, some of this other stuff, but I think we can move that up. So, right after the presentation on the China trip, if you could do your presentation. Is that all right?
That's great.
Is that okay with the board to do that? So, yeah?
So, I'll move that we accept the agenda with the change as noted.
Okay. Moved by Kenny, is her second? Second by Dan? All those in favor? Six in favor, student rep in favor. Public comment? No? Approval of the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the May 3rd, 2017 regular meeting minutes? Kenny?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from our May 13th meeting, May 3rd meeting, as presented.
Okay. Moved by Kenny, is her second? By Dan? Are there corrections? Hearing that, and all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor of the student?
And I abstain because I wasn't here.
Five in favor, one abstention. The minutes are approved. Okay, so, I don't know if there are other announcements from the district or whether we should move to the China trip.
I think we should move to the China.
Okay. China trip.
Good evening. I'm here to report back on the life-changing China trip that the studio orchestra was able to take during April vacation. Terracotta warriors, giant wild goose pagoda, Tiananmen Square, Dujiangyang irrigation system, Mount Quencheng, the Forbidden City, the song of the everlasting sorrow, Sichuan opera, acrobatics, endless good food, Sichuan hot pot, the Xi'an city wall, giant panda breeding center, and of course, the Great Wall. All of these sacred and historic places by themselves would have made this trip exceedingly memorable, yet somehow, even these monumental sites did not compare to the most profound component of our trip. It was the brilliant idea of the Confucius Institute to bring our students to China, to exchange ideas, music, and artistry with Chinese students, workers, and artists, to promote meaningful connection between our cultures. We shared the work of American master Buster Keaton by performing as the live orchestra to Keaton's Sherlock Jr. All the music was authentic to the period of the film. The majority of the score, with over 308 pages of original music, was arranged specifically by me for this group's instrumentation in the three weeks preceding the trip. After the film, Oyster River students Alana and Penny performed the Chinese folk song Jasmine Flower. Chengdu University followed our performance with the ancient sounds of traditional Chinese instruments, dazzling traditional dance, and lyric folk songs. Next, we visited the Longjiang Road Primary School and performed Sherlock Jr. The audience of 5th and 6th graders encouraged before the performance to remain silent, quickly found Keaton's humor irresistible. And by the second half of the film, full-out belly laughter became the norm. One student was seen literally falling out of his seat with laughter. It was magical. The slapstick and the music transcended language and culture. We were as happy to be performing as they were to be watching. Afterwards, the school's locally famous happy band performed for us with Western instruments, and we concluded with a piece that we played together. Our next stop was a performance at the progressive factory DT Dental Technology Lab. DT Dental makes dental implants from computer models. It is a flagship business in the Chengdu area, working hard to create a better work environment for its employees. The factory has two performance spaces, and employees are encouraged to sing, dance, and study traditional Chinese arts. After our silent film, workers proudly shared traditional Chinese etiquette, beautiful songs, and traditional dance. Most of the workers in this factory were the same ages as the Oyster River students on the trip. There was an instant and palpable bond created during our stay at the factory. Our next stop was the Longquan District School, number five. Students from this school performed with traditional instruments during the Olympic opening ceremony in Beijing in 2008. Now, they were performing for us. Their precision was electrifying. Students from both schools soared with pride and joy as we shared our talents and our culture with each other. These performances broke down barriers and made connections that could have never been accomplished in other ways. A cultural exchange. We cooked together, made crafts together, practiced together, and adored each other's works of art. We happily shared the stage and the ping-pong table, although we forget now who won. We shined in etiquette class and joyfully shared the dance floor. We received many wonderful gifts that we will cherish forever, but we will cherish none more than our new friends. I'd really like to give my most sincere thanks to Du Jie for the wonderful work that she's doing with the Confucius Institute and the alliance with Chengdu University that's trying to make things like this happen, that really are the future of peace in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Thank you. My pleasure, my great pleasure to be part of it, to be part of such a wonderful trip for Oyster River kids. Thank you. Thank all the students, all the shareholders. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to Dr. Boris and everybody else. It was a real team effort to get this together as quickly as it was pulled together, and I hope that this can be the beginning of future trips. This is not the end. This is the beginning. Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you for coming for that, and very inspiring. Okay, Alex?
Tough to follow that, Alex. I know. If I knew I was following the pianist and the singer, maybe I wouldn't have agreed to the agenda change, but, um, so, it was about exactly one year from now that, a year ago, that I proposed to all of you that to ask if I could use your students as participants in my study, and I'm very happy that you agreed to, and tonight I'll be reporting on what I found with that study. So, um, to remind you, my research study was called Student Commuters: Unpacking the Factors Influenced How High School Students Commute to School or Travel to School. And the specific research questions I was looking into were how do environmental concern, self-esteem, and perceptions of safety and infrastructure predict high school students' transportation use? So, two terms I'll be using throughout this presentation are active and passive modes of transportation. So, I mean, when I say active modes, I mean those that take physical energy from the commuter. So, those would be, in this study, running, or not running, walking, biking, or skateboarding, and passive are driving, taking the bus, or carpooling. So, that's the wrong direction. So, why this study is important is because not only are there environmental implications of, are, not only are there environmental implications, but there are also personal health implications of living in a car-dependent society. So, there are CO2 emissions and large environmental impact from the production and disposal of automobiles, but also the relying on cars and buses to get around can also contribute to rising obesity rates from childhood to adulthood, and potentially encouraging people to take active modes of transportation could reduce that, reduce that increase, reduce that disparity. So, currently, millennials have a lower rate of having their license compared to their parents' generation, and if we can capitalize on that trend and make it so it's more possible for people to continue to walk or continue to bike to where they're going, we could combat that issue. So, through this study, I talked to 291 students from Oyster River and New Market High Schools, and I had one focus group in one, or one focus group at each, at each school. So, overall, about 20% of students use active modes of transportation at least weekly, but environmental concern and self-esteem do not correlate with mode choice, and neither, but perceptions of safety and infrastructure do. So, I thought this was, this was really interesting, and I realized that New Market and Oyster River are pretty different places. One's a cooperative school district, one's an individual school district, very different geographic locations, and I wanted to see, or geographic size, and I wanted to look at each community individually. So, if we do that, we can see that at New Market, about 30% of students use active modes at least weekly, and at Oyster River, about half that do. But it's also important to keep in mind that Oyster River's median household income is about $50,000 higher than New Market. About four times as many students qualify for free reduced lunch at New Market. Oyster River students have a significantly higher environmental concern and higher self-esteem compared to New Market, but New Market students live much closer to school than, than New Market, or, New Market students live closer than Oyster River students. But Oyster River students report that their parents would be more worried about them biking, walking, or skateboarding to school. So, this is a lot of numbers I'm throwing at you, but, so I'm going to try to show it to you in this fancy map here. So, these numbers, or these, all the different colors on the different, on the different roads correlate with the amount of stress that the roads put on to a cyclist. So, green would be a very bike-able road, and red would be a not-so-bike-able road, and this is based on if there's a bike lane, speed limit, line of sight, size of shoulder, frequent, like, number of cars. So, we can see Student A lives, you can orient yourself here, Student A lives on Lee Hook Road, which is a high-stress road because it's a very high speed limit, and they live about eight miles away from the school, and they walk, or they take the bus to school. So, and they have a high environmental concern. Meanwhile, Student B lives about two miles away from school and has, separated by mainly green roads from school, compared to Student A, which has red roads and orange roads. So, but they're still taking, and Student B also drives to school, takes an active mode of transportation. So, they, even though they live, they have very different commuting situations, they're both still taking passive modes. We're going to compare that to New Market, where Student C lives about, this is a much smaller, smaller map, Student C lives about two miles away from the school on a moderately high-stress road and takes, drives to school, has a higher environmental concern, but Student D lives less than half a mile away from the school and walks to school. They're the only person that walks to school, but they have a high environmental concern. So, what this is pointing out is that people have high environmental concern, but they're acting differently from what their belief system is. There's this, like, attitude-behavior split, which is something that, like, in this community, many people are worried about the condition of the environment, but it's, at least, if you want to say that students are representative of the total population, it's about 80% of people, at least the students, take passive modes. So, I asked students in the focus group, why could this be? And as it says here, kids say they don't care. They probably think that they're the only person to do it, so is it really going to make a difference? Or if everyone else changes, or I'll only change if everyone else changes. So, it's like, what, to a sense of apathy, and like, their individual person is not going to make any, any sort of change. So, with this, with this information, what can we do going forward? We want to reduce the barriers for people to act, like, along with their, where their morals lie, because there's social barriers, there's infrastructural barriers, and we want to make it as easy as possible, in my opinion, for people to act on behalf of what they believe and what they, what they hope for the planet. So, we want to make as many of these roads green as possible, first of all. We want to make the infrastructure possible for people to bike. Maybe that would reduce parents from worrying about their kids biking or walking. And we can enforce policy. We currently have a three-foot law and hands-free laws, which are very, like, very limitedly enforced. Like, a lot of people don't even know what the three-foot law is, and in case you don't know, it's that at 30 miles per hour, or no matter how fast you're going, when you pass a bicycle, you have to be three feet away, and for every, every 10 miles per hour over 30 miles per hour, you have to be another foot. So, if you're going 50 miles per hour, you have to be five feet away. If you're going 40, you have to be four feet away. But many people are just not even aware of this. So, and we can make social shifts. So, and some ways to do this is that, is to make biking or walking groups for people to walk or bike together when they go to school, so that we can combine people that live in a similar area to make it a more social activity, so not doing alone. Could have a later start time, which I think is something that you were considering. You did it. So, I'd be curious to see how that would affect if people are maybe biking or walking more often, if they have more time in the morning, because that is something that came up frequently in the focus group. They could have more storage for belongings. I'm not sure what the current situation is now, but if people are currently, like, the cameras and textbooks and everything from, from home to school, it'd make it much more easy if they just didn't, didn't have to worry about doing that on a bicycle. And if you can address this problem from a young age, kids and parents would be, feel more comfortable on bicycles and, and walking, so they could continue this trend into the future. So, I would encourage you that if you're also, if you're part of, part of this 80% group of people that take passive modes of transportation, at least, or on a regular basis, just at least the next time you put your key in their ignition, at least consider if you could bike or walk to where you're going. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's any time for any questions, but...
No, I think, other questions, round?
I have one. Are you going to do this presentation to each of the towns?
Um, likely not.
Because it's really incredible information. We don't control, you know, the infrastructure.
Right.
If they make a change in the road structure to make them more friendly to bikers and walkers, then the towns would need to have this kind of information.
Yeah.
I was only going to add to that, if you notice 108 between Durham and New Market, they're actually, it's not technically a bike lane, but they're widening the shoulder in three long parts, and my neighborhood, which has a lot of kids, Wedwood off of Durham Point Road, that fix makes it much easier, I think, in the future for a lot of families to have a kid bike to the school.
Yeah, that's a, it's an interesting situation, where they had this project to work on this, but also, and have this multi-use lane, but it's not exactly going how it was originally planned. There's guardrails, which is also kind of nerve-wracking to bike between traffic and guardrails, but that is good, that they're making...
It's better than it was.
Right. It's definitely better than it was.
Any questions? So... Thank you very much.
Yes, and also, I will send the link to someone. I also have it in...
Did you send it to Wendy?
Yes, Wendy.
Yeah.
So, we have it.
Yeah, we have it.
To, for the, I have, like, it written as a honors thesis and also an abbreviated version that's a little bit more accessible, so...
Did you send that to Wendy as well?
Yes.
Because we can forward it to the towns.
All right. Thank you very much.
That'd be great to hear you all that. Thank you. Are there, are there any other district announcements? No? What? Are there, are there other district, district announcements? Mr. Harrington, please, please introduce yourself.
If I can remember. Dennis Harrington, MoHerramitt Principal, for another 40 days or so. I often talk to the board about daily toil. I'd like to give you a few examples that really illustrate what I'm talking about. There was a group of staff, mainly, our school nurse, Toni Lee, Sarah Larson-Denon, Joanne Chatrin, Jessica Whalen, Eileen Carter, Christina Dolcino, and a parent, Holly Barrett, who is our enrichment chair. They started working last April to construct a series of enrichment activities based on the theme of the arts. Especially listening to what happened in China, it really is important to highlight the arts. So, as a result of their toil, which began last April, we had 41 different activities that were related to the arts, with groups of five to 10 children in each group across the school. One of the participants was our superintendent, and this mural and this mural were created by him with 10 children. And I had one part. I built a wall.
To keep people in.
Who's going to pay for that?
The superintendent. But the point is, daily toil is what makes a school run. And the second piece is more connected to what I just heard going on in China. This is a poem written by a 3rd grader, and when I talked to him today about where the poem came from, he informed me that Mrs. Jones, his 2nd grade teacher, motivated him to write poetry. And this is what he came up with and shared with me today. Peace. I'm hiding here. No, here. I'm in here. Now you're in there. I'm peace-elusive against my will. I want to be found, but still I hide, evading at every turn. I'm still seeking at every turn. You can find me where you want. Just let it happen. Don't bystand. 3rd grader. I'll just pass this around. I know you have a busy evening, and this shows you the extent of organization and commitment that went into the preparing of this year's year of the artist. And I made this. And it'll be out front for the, as long as I can imagine, on the grass.
Thank you, Dennis.
Carrie Veish from Mastway. I just really want to put a big thank you out to everyone that helped last Friday. We had our May Fair behind Mastway School. It was absolutely amazing, first of all, weather-wise, because when we woke up in the morning, it was still raining. By 4 o'clock, the sun broke through, and it was absolutely beautiful. It really was a community, community event. We had, first of all, Debbie Curran was the chair for the event. She didn't even become the chair. I think we had maybe two months to prepare, not even. She did an extraordinary job pulling all the pieces together, working with the PTO board as well. So, I thank her from the bottom of my heart. It was amazing. Our teachers really were a big part of it. They ran events, they sold tickets. We did a silent auction, which Mastway teachers have frequently done with gently-used items, and we made a good chunk of donations off of that. Doris Demers really stepped up and worked closely with Debbie Curran to have a great menu. Everything was great. We had the grill out there. Doris was flipping burgers. It was just amazing. It really was fun. The Oyster River Middle School jazz band came and played. It was packed. It was very, very fun to see everyone, and they sounded spectacular. From the high school, with the National Honor Society students show up, and they were there early, and they stayed late, they helped clean up, they were amazing. I can't speak more highly about our students here and within the whole, all districts and all levels. The biggest surprise really was we raised just under $9,000, and this was the largest grossing May Fair that we've ever had, and all of that money will go to our playground that we are getting very close to fully funding. So, I'd like to just say thank you to everyone. It was an amazing event, and it just touched my heart, the community involvement from all different levels and people from all over our community. So, thanks so much.
Thank you.
I just want to add one. I attended the Strings Concert this week, and it happened in the gymnasium at the high school as opposed to the Performing Arts Center, and it was impacted by the viewing of Miles Goldberg, who passed away. It was scheduled that night, and to Jay's credit, he rescheduled it. So, they were playing in less than an ideal room, a gymnasium, but the music they produced was absolutely stunning, inspiring. We went from 5th grade all the way to the senior high, so all the parents present could actually see the full scope of the program. There was not an empty seat in the gym. The place was packed, even though it was rescheduled to a gymnasium. So, that's a real credit to Andrea, our strings person, and to Jay for his continued support of finding places for them to practice during a school day in a building that isn't designed to hold that many students. The number of kids who are participating in strings continues to grow. We really thought this would be a program that would grow slow, and it has grown way beyond our expectations, so I think that's a real credit to Andrea.
So, maybe to move to board comments. Denise?
Two things. First of all, I want to comment, every year, the high school PTO sponsors, the last meeting of the year is students, seniors graduating, and we call it, called Places You'll Go, so that they can kind of share their experience all the way up through the school district and talk about what their plans are going forward and... and talk about what their plans are going forward and what things they felt were, you know, most valuable, that contributed to their decisions. And it's, it's really a wonderful evening, and I really want to commend all the students that came this year. There were about a dozen of them at a very, very busy time of year to, you know, give up an hour and a half of an evening to come and just share their experience. So really wanted to commend them, and also to our principal Suzanne Filippone for just doing such a great job of being the facilitator and really making them comfortable so it was more of a conversation. And the whole thing was, you know, videotaped, so people will be able to watch it. It will be on the website, and I highly encourage people to check it out because they had a lot of really interesting, you know, insights in terms of their, their thoughts about what contributed to, you know, their growth through the district. And they, they had nothing but wonderful things to say, but it's, it was really very worthwhile, so thank you. The second thing was that I missed last school board meeting because I was away at a conference. And just in regard to the goal setting, I just, and my idea is just easily incorporated, I think, into all the things that were, were talked about at the meeting. I just want to make sure that we continue our focus on communication, particularly with the parents in our district, particularly parents of older students. I still hear a lot about not knowing what's going on, and, and so even though I, I know that we, we try a lot of different ways, I just want to make sure that we sort of don't, I think we made a lot of progress in the last year, and I want to make sure that we incorporate that into our goals so that we continue to look at every way possible to inform the community about all the different things that are occurring and give them the opportunity to provide feedback.
Kenny?
As our last meeting at Mastway, when I commented how beautiful the school looked, again, coming here to Mohairamit, incredibly beautiful, and it segues into Jay Rashad, I think, being modest, but the service palooza happened with the middle school. And the middle school grounds looked beautiful, and they made a tremendous impact on many other places in Durham. And just that whole concept of students going out and working in their community, I think, is wonderful. The Chinese trip, stunning. Who would have thought when UC Terrell came to us a couple of years ago and talked about adding Mandarin for a few kids in our elementary schools that it would be blossoming like this? And the last thing, as we all know, but for the community, we have a lot of baseball interest here on our school board. We have Maria, who's always wanting to know terminology and learn things. We have Dan, who's very involved with RYA and baseball. We have Al, who's like the sabermetric guru. We have a student, a high school student, senior, Brennan Oxford, who threw three no-hitters in a row, which is, I wish he was playing for my Yankees, but--
They're doing okay.
He's going off to Wake Fars next year, but I just thought that that should be recognized. It's an incredible, really, a feat that I can't even comprehend, and congratulations to him and his team.
Actually, Anthony, he's actually a junior, so he's back in fourth year.
Oh, wow.
Good.
I did read about it.
Other comments from the board? No? Okay, Assistant Superintendent? Nope? Okay. Superintendent?
So we have a lot of catch-up business to do tonight with these reports. For me, a number of them were reports that the board asked me to come back around and inform them on. The first one is not one of those issues. Our bus drivers have associated now with a national union out of Massachusetts. I've had initial call from them. They're waiting for final recognition by the New Hampshire Labor Relations Board, but it should go relatively smoothly. A gentleman I talked to on the board of the union in Massachusetts was named Patrick Daly, and he seemed pretty, like a pretty decent guy, so I just kind of gave him the heads up that this is a negotiating year for the bus drivers. I gave him some really quick tips in terms of timelines, because Nofure has a very fixed timeline when it comes to negotiations, and he was very appreciative. So I look forward to working with them representing the drivers.
Can I just ask a question? Will that change the nature of the team we take to the negotiations?
I think it can. I think that we're going to have to kind of feel our way through, maybe in the first initial meeting. You know, I probably would want to have Gordon present, get a sense of how the dynamics are going to go in negotiations, and that'll tell us how to move forward. Because it is not, you know, we've not had any relationship, obviously, with any, any union for the drivers, other than the drivers themselves, so. But I'm, you know, I'm going to go into this cautiously optimistic.
Good.
Then the next piece was a follow-up related to the high school position. Remember, during budget season, we asked for your permission to create a teaching position at the high school, but have it remain undesignedated. That was a bit unique for us, but we wanted to do a student survey. The student survey was pretty compelling. Suzanne and Heather Mechenoff did that survey. And we have an extraordinarily high level of interest in our nutrition and wellness, AKA life skills area. So Suzanne wants to use that position to fill out that program and be able to offer that to our students. So that's how that position would be used. I'd be glad to answer questions.
Yeah. Just in terms of any additional costs associated with equipment, it sounded like part of that was going to be culinary, and I, and I just--
No additional cost, other than, I mean, you already have an investment in an FCS classroom that has full kitchen, you know, equipment, so the cost would be associated with perishables, food, and that kind of thing, so should be pretty rational.
Other questions? We've already approved it, so we don't need to vote on it. But if we have other information we want? Oh, good.
Moving on to the elementary enrollment, I already said I'm sorry to Kenny because I thought that Carrie and I had looked at every possible option, and he kept on insisting that I should look at combined grade at the one-two level, and I said, no, no, we have to look at that, Ken. We spent hours on it. You know, we're pretty sure this is the way it has to be. But afterwards, Carrie said, we didn't look at the one-two option. And so I just want to acknowledge that Ken's keen insight actually was the correct recommendation. So what the board did at the last meeting was authorize a kindergarten, an extra kindergarten position, and that'll have a dramatic impact on those class sizes. Carrie and I are recommending tonight that the board create a one-two position, and you can see that the impact on both classes by doing that would bring them down to twenty right across the board. I hesitated in making this recommendation until tonight because I really wanted to make sure that I could identify the resources to pay for the extra position I have, and it's due to, you know, a pretty sharp pencil on the part of Catherine and Todd. Catherine went into her tuition lines and other lines of support, out-of-district tuition, and you may recall, we had this giant unanticipated bubble come in at the beginning of last year that we had to cobble things together to cover. And she's had a couple of art of districts students who have left recently, and that money is still in the draft budget. So through her hard work, she was able to free up $56,000 to help pay for this second position at Mastway. And Todd's contribution was that he identified $20,000 in grant money. So with $76,000 in total, we can comfortably go forward with a recommendation, and I would need your authorization, to create a second new position at Mastway at grade one-two. And the way this would work is Carrie would advertise the new kindergarten position and the new one-two position for a week internally in both the elementary schools and grade five, to see if anybody internally wanted those positions. And then when that's done, we would externally advertise. So we're going to jump on this pretty quickly with your authorization, because we really want to make sure that we, we get the kind of candidates we've been getting all spring, real, sharp people who really want to work for us. And the faster that we can work, get that done, the better the opportunity for that to occur. So I'm asking authorization of the board tonight to create a one-two position at Mastway.
Could we have a motion to that effect?
I do need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we create a, or authorize a one-two position at Mastway.
Moved by Al, is there a second? Second by Dan? Discussion, questions for Jim?
Just a question. I'm always nervous when we talk about taking money out of special ed because if somebody moves in during the summer, we ain't got a choice but to fund it.
Sure. Thanks, Maria. And Catherine, you're more than welcome to come to the microphone. But Catherine has--
Come on, come on.
A reserve account that we thought we would have to tap into this year. And again, just to give Catherine credit, you might recall, back in October, her accounts were like $360,000 in the red. And throughout the school year, she, Andrea, and Misty have worked aggressively to figure out ways to minimize that deficit. And the last time I got a report from Sue, it was down to $30,000. So Catherine and I are very comfortable in making this proposal, with the understanding that should we ever get into trouble, we do have that backup reserve account that you would authorize us to get into, and we have an asset this year, and we think we'll be okay next year. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, and some of the lines still have a little bit, so he didn't take it all. So there's still some money in there in the event we get a move-in or two, we'll still be able to support them. Misty actually just called me a couple of days ago, and she said, based on some restructuring of some programming, we figured out how to program for a few students a little bit different way, and it's really going to work better. So we're figuring out how to maximize our staff, because the other part of this is that we haven't been able to be fully staffed for the year with paraprofessionals, especially in the high school. So we've been trying some new programming ideas, some new models, and they're really working well, and the high school staff has worked really hard. So that's the other reason, is we're able to free up some money in our pair line as well, in the event somebody moves in.
And again, just as a final thought, real teamwork on the part of the administrators, they knew that Carrie had a need, and we all dug in and tried to figure out how to create a solution. So real credit to everybody, and Suzanne dug in, Jay dug in, Dennis did, because we knew there was a need, and we had to figure out how to resolve it. So thank you, everybody.
Other questions on the second position at Mastway? Are you ready to vote? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, that position is authorized.
Thank you.
So do you have this special ed position update? Is that next?
Catherine, you might as well come back to the podium. So along with Catherine finding a way to help a colleague in need, Carrie, she also, within her own budget, was able to address several of the proposals that she made during budget season related to her staffing needs.
Right, so I had three yellow sheets at budget time, and if you remember, when you guys were approving the other yellow sheets, a couple of you asked, what about Catherine's positions? I'm so glad you did, too. So what's happened is I did allocate some funds moving forward as I was going through some of the budget lines. The other way I was able to find some money is that some of our costs that we had budgeted three or four percent increases on came in at like one and a half percent. So some of that money that for contracted services came in a little lower. So there's three yellow sheets. One was for school psychologist hours during the summer, and I'm going to have grant funds to be able to support that. So I feel very confident about that. And then the second piece was for ESOL services at Mohairamit. We currently have the role of a half-time tutor, half-time teacher. She really is a half-time teacher, and we really need to look at that contract being a full-time teacher. And so I was able to find money within the special ed lines to add to Dennis's line to make that a full teacher position. And that was right around, was it $26,000, Jim, I think? Yeah. And the third position was the assistive technology specialist. So this year, we have a full-time school psychologist at the high school and a speech and language assistant. What we're doing is that speech and language assistant position is going to become a speech pathologist position, so that our other speech pathologists can work primarily on assistive technology for students in accessing the curriculum. So she would be doing that about four days a week, and then also assisting with evaluations in the district. The candidate, the individual in the speech and language assistant position is moving on. She's moving, so she's not losing her position. That was the other thing Jim and I had talked about. So it doesn't affect anybody.
So we would need authorization to make those changes as well. We've identified the resources, and we just need your support to say, go forward and do that work.
Do we need a motion?
Yep, please.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve those changes? Denise?
I motion to approve the changes as described.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Yeah? Okay. So essentially, you've managed these changes within the budget, is that--
Exactly. What we did was we rearranged the budget to meet the needs based on other areas that we thought we wouldn't have those needs any longer. So we've just reshuffled. So what you'll see is, just as a, as an example, the $56,000 that Catherine's identified will now be shifted to the elementary account, moving when we move the budget forward for next year. So you'll see it there.
Okay. So I think we have a motion, a necessary motion and a second? Okay. Further discussion? Are you not? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Student rep abstains. But those, those shifts are approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have others, or?
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to point out, you do have the enrollment grids, and you can see that the kindergarten enrollment at Mastway is within two of being the maximum. And as we did last year with your support, if we get beyond those two, we'll start enrolling them at Mohairamit. That's really the total sum of my report, Tom.
So, so the expectation next year is that Mastway will be bigger than Mohairamit, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's nip and tuck right now. I mean, there'll be, it'll be a first. And, and then concurrently, Carrie, Jim Ruzicki, and I are looking at the facility and figuring out what happens if we have another group of kids come in bigger than we're expecting and trying to figure out the, the potential for additional classroom space.
Denise?
I hate to say this, but, I mean, if this trend continues, I think we might need to be looking at redistricting again, back the other way. I mean, you know, because there's only so much space in Mastway, and, I mean, it's a difficult situation, and, you know--
Yes, I couldn't agree with you more, Denise. I would just point out that we still are, we have still, we still have more children than classrooms here at Mohairamit, so we probably should put that in the mix. But we still have a couple of years before this building actually gets down to its designed capacity. So you're absolutely right.
Okay, others? Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. I assume we have no business administrator's report?
None.
Student center report?
So last night was the National Honor Society induction. This was where all the sophomores and juniors who were accepted to the, to NHS were officially inducted in. It was a wonderful event, and I got to attend, because I'm a current member, and you got to see all the inductees line up and get inducted, which was really wonderful. And Ms. Filippone gave a great closing remark as well. And the World Language National Honor Society induction is on May 24th. This is where all the students who are proficient in world language are accepted to the Honor Society. And prom is this Saturday, May 20th, which is exciting, and all the juniors and seniors and other underclassmen who are attending are all very excited. It's at the River Mill in Dover. And power, on May 23rd is the Power of One Night at the high school, from five to six thirty, and all community members are welcome. I don't know if you guys already know this, but this is the freshmen's world cultures final assignment, and they showed, they've been working on it all year. I've been working in a world cultures class and giving them advice from an upperclassman who's done the project themselves, which has been really interesting to see how, like, it really works from when I did it two years ago. But this is the showcase where they showed all the work that they've put into their project, which is very exciting. And then May 31st, there's the senior art show, from five to seven. This is where seniors who have worked, taken an art class over the past four years can display their best work in the multipurpose room, and the art department is working really hard to prepare all the seniors for the show. hard to prepare all the seniors for the show. And I skipped a date, but the 25th through the 28th, there are five shows of Into the Woods, which is the play this year, and the drama department has been working tirelessly to prepare for it. The juniors took the science kneecaps yesterday and today, which was, I won't say fun, but there was, yes. And then it's been 23 more days till graduation.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving to discussion items, we have the draft of the master schedule for school board meetings. So I wonder if I could have a motion to approve that master schedule?
I just, I don't know about, I'm, and I know, again, I apologize because I wasn't here for the discussion. I am concerned about one meeting only in September, and I did hear the discussion about, you know, moving, which I would be in favor of. I don't know, I guess I'm just a little bit nervous about whether that's going to put us behind as far as, you know, I mean, I think if we're on track for setting our goals and can get those done by the end of June, but I don't know if anybody else is concerned about only having one meeting in September.
You know, the last meeting, Denise, I put it out there because usually the first meeting in September is the update on enrollments, and the second meeting is really just how did the school year open? We don't usually do any big presentations in September because everything is opening. So I put it out there that if, you know, I thought we could probably do okay with just one meeting in September. But we left the manifest meeting in just in case if we needed to activate a meeting there. But, you know, we go through a month like this, and we've had three meetings, we've gone through budget season, and we've gone through three meetings, and so I think you more than make up for that one meeting throughout the year. And August would be the important meeting in gearing up for the fall if there's any changes, and September is really just a report, how was the school opening and so forth. So I think we're okay in September.
Maria?
I am concerned for different reasons, and remember, I gave you honey to keep you. I've looked it up online. School boards are supposed to uphold the Constitution, and we've had several constitutional questions lately around religion. Two of them of the administration's, whatever their executive directions, have been denied at court. And the latest one, giving more preference to, and political power to religious groups, is being taken to court as well. And I looked up online about the religious holidays, and I have about six pages of religious holidays of different kinds. So if we're starting to schedule around one, and I realize that Christmas has been and continues to be a federal holiday, and I can't help that. And I think the school system should change its vocabulary and talk about midwinter vacation rather than Christmas vacation. But I don't think it's appropriate. We have it in the minutes, we have it on the video that we're doing this for Rosh Hashanah. Ramadan comes up next week, and we have the wonderful play, and we're not rescheduling that because of Ramadan. And I think we're getting ourselves into trouble. I think there will be letters to the editor and stuff like that if we go ahead. Personally, I'm an immigrant, and I had to take an oath when I came here to uphold the Constitution, so that's important to me.
Denise?
I'm, given that we feel comfortable with one meeting in September, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt the meeting as presented tonight.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Kenny?
I, just the comment I would make is, one, Rosh Hashanah is one of the two most major holidays in the Jewish religion, and religions have many holidays, and Judaism has many, many. When I made the request, I made it as a board, as we're colleagues, and kind of that I would not be able to come and ask from the board to acknowledge that that was an important family night for me, and it's not even a religious night for me, and therefore maybe make a change in the date. So it was more personal as well, so.
Yeah?
I just had one comment, and that was to Denise's thing, that I said to Jim, and we put the manifest in there, kind of putting that in pencil is our overflow, just in case. I mean, I, I always, I agree with you, I was kind of nervous just in case something happens, but I think we, we have something in place that if that comes up, we can handle.
So are we ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, student rep in favor, all those opposed, one opposed, so the calendar's adopted. Last day of school for the 2016-2017? Kenny?
I'll move that Friday, January, Friday, June 23rd will be the last day of school for students. The day will be an early dismissal of 12:15 PM for middle and high school and 1:15 PM for elementary school.
Moved by Kenny, is her second? Second by Al. Discussion on this? Denise?
The only discussion, knowing the seniors are done in graduation, it just seems like there's really a lot of time this year, and I know it's because of the snow days and so on and so forth. But I don't know, I mean, I think it's just something that we need to keep in mind moving forward, that I know we were able to make that work this year, but possibly to consider, you know, with, looking at graduation in terms of, you know, every year we seem to just cut it down to the wire. And it's worked so far, but I get a little nervous that sometime it's not going to work. So, you know, it's just something I think we need to think about going forward.
Maybe starting a year earlier?
Yeah, starting a year or something.
I was just looking for snow tires for the bus.
Yeah, something. I don't know. It just, there's a big gap, there's really a big gap this year because the graduation is June 9th.
The 9th.
The 9th, and then so the 23rd, so it's just a lot, a lot of days, which I'm sure the seniors appreciate, but anyway.
Okay. So are we ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, now we come to the middle school competency report. I had thought that Michael would be here now, so we could proceed with discussing that, or we could go with some of the other items on the agenda and come back to that for Michael. I don't, do you have a feeling about that?
He thought he would be an hour late, so.
He thought he'd be here by eight.
Coming just up, so why don't we, I'm good with maybe doing the other stuff, and if Michael comes, then we'll double down on that.
Is that, is that agreeable to people? Okay. So we've done the master schedule, I'm just starting to look at the motions, we've done, we need a motion to approve the Oyster River High School overnight field trip. Denise?
I'll motion to approve the Oyster River High School overnight field trip to the National History Day at the University of Maryland, June 12th through June 15th.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Dan? Discussion on this? No? All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, that's passed. We've done the authorization of the last day of school. We've authorized the second elementary position at Masway.
We need to authorize, didn't we already authorize that one FTE?
We don't need to author, we don't need to authorize that because we've already authorized it. So that was just informative.
Yeah, so that was a mistake, same.
That's that. Okay, let's move to the vacancies, is that right? Okay, we have, let's see, to get my stuff set. I think we had a sheet with all the vacancies on one page, right? So there's like five, am I correct of that? So is this, is this the complete list? So we had, at Moheramet, we had Brittany Morley, school psychologist, we had Melissa Giannino, special education. At the middle school, we had Caroline Hurd, grade five. We had Loren Ramsdell, grade seven, language arts, and Kimberly Beadleman. Oh, I know her. Yeah, she's great, okay, grade eight. So I don't know if we want to separate those out, or want to do those as a block?
How about as a block, we'll, as Tom mentioned, the two positions at Moheramet, the three at middle school, names as Tom mentioned, positions as Tom mentioned, that we approve these five individuals.
Okay, moved by Kenny as a block, this is her second, second by Dan. Questions? Discussion?
Just, excuse me.
Yeah?
Just because I like to be picky. If we could change what it says on the agenda, motion to approve a vacancy does not make sense to me to fill the vacancy or to approve the teacher.
Which would you prefer?
Oh, I'm not picky much.
How about motion to approve the teacher?
Motion to approve, most, motion to approve the teachers, the nominated teachers as a block? Okay, could read a motion to approve the nominated teachers as a block, as a group?
They're not all teachers, so I think you're going to have to change it to motion to approve the nominations.
Motion to approve the nominations. Okay? Is that, good? They're set? Language-wise, okay. I had one question. It seemed like Brittany Morley, her position, her experience is more high school, and you moved, looked like you moved an elementary counselor to the high school, and then you had, and her experience is more in the high school, and then, is there something I'm missing here?
So when Dr. Long joined us, he actually was a middle school, high school, school psychologist primarily. He had experience in elementary. Brittany Morley has experience with elementary. She did some of her previous practice around her internships and practicums with elementary. When it came time to take a position, that was the one that she got right away, so she took it. But based on our interview process, and Dr. Morse met her as well, she's, you know, she prefers being with elementary.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the minutes note that Michael has joined us. So we have a motion and a second to approve these nominations, is there further discussion? Okay, ready to vote? Okay. So the motion, Michael, is to approve these nominations as a block?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. All those, the nominations are approved. Okay. So now if we circle back then to the middle school competency report, and Dr. Morse, I don't know if you want to talk about this recommendation?
Sure.
Jay wants to participate?
I think Jay, why don't you come to the podium, and then we can talk through this. So we crafted a motion for the board, knowing that that conversation that we've had a number of times, sometimes it doesn't gravitate itself to a nice, easy motion. So there's several parts to this based on what we've heard at the board level. So the first one is that grade six and seven will implement the proposed reporting system as presented to the board next year. The second one is the district would use appropriate communications outlets to inform parents of this change and the rationale for it. The third one is during the implementation year, the district will use multiple approaches to evaluating this change, which will include surveys of parents to determine if they find the reporting system informative and technologically accessible. Surveys of students to determine if they find it informative and appropriate in terms of incentives, focus groups for the sixth and seventh grade, who can describe their experiences in the new reporting system. The fourth item is at the conclusion of the 2017-18 year, the administration will report to the board on this evaluation and adjustments that need to be made on this reporting system and the adjustments that need to be made. Number five would be dealing with the eighth grade, that the core teachers that currently aren't using competency-based reporting would be ELA, social studies and science. Math isn't in algebra, so would be continuing to use the traditional grading system, and at their option, consistent with their current high school approach, meaning that eighth grade and ninth grade are trying to address the issue of transition. It's further understood the eighth grade staff will fully participate with their middle school peers in all competency work, including the aligning of assessments, reporting, and professional development. And the last one is to create as smooth a transition as possible between the middle school and high school, the eighth grade will be knowledgeable of and participate when appropriate in the ninth grade work related to competencies. So the idea behind this is to try to capture all the elements that we've heard in discussion over the number of times that we reported to the board in order to be able to move the reporting system forward. And Jay, do you have anything more you want to add to that?
Oh, that's great. I think you did a great job with that memo to the board, Dr. Morse.
And so Jay and I can answer any questions you have related to this.
Denise?
So just, just to clarify, and I certainly understand that the eighth grade staff will participate in, you know, professional development, competency work, but we're not going to be asking them to grade the students both ways.
We would, what the memo states, and I'd clarify, that the eighth grade would report on the competencies just like everyone else, but they would be given the option if they wanted, if they wanted to, that they could continue to report with the traditional 100-point scale.
So if I can follow up, so what would happen to those, so what you're saying is they would still develop competency grades for the students?
Yes.
It's just what would, what would happen, they just wouldn't be available for parents to see? I guess.
We would make sure, like, we would report on the progress report that was presented to the board. They would do that with their colleagues, but if they wanted to, they could continue to report on a 100-point scale. So for example, if a social studies teacher wanted to report on competencies as well as a traditional 100-point scale, they could do so, and they could just share that in a format via Power School, whatever they would choose, and also report that quarterly if they would like to do that. So they're given the option to do both.
So that's not the current grading system, then?
In terms of what our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers are doing?
No, I'm just trying to read the language. During the 2002, the eighth grade core teachers will continue with the current grading system, but that's not the current grading system, is it?
Uh, no, I think it says in there they'll be given the option to do so.
Current grading system at their option.
Yeah. Okay. So in the current grading system, they do not use that, the meets and all the other thing, right?
They do not, no, they do not.
So they could continue to grade as they graded this year?
Yes.
Or they could, or they could move towards, okay?
Yes.
But you're, no, well, that's not what I just heard, though. I heard that they do both.
Well, Denise, I think it's the issue of, your question, it would be impossible for the eighth grade staff to work on the competencies and standards, and then, so that's an internal system, that's, you know, what they're doing as professionals. They're working continually to work with the sixth and seventh and fifth grade, but when they report out to parents, it'll look like the traditional grading system. So, you know, they will have, there's no way that they can't do both. So what you're asking is, are they going to continue to work on competencies and assessments? Yes. Are they going to report on a numeric scale? If they want to, they can.
I just clarify, the expectation would be, from my viewpoint, is they would use the same report card as the sixth, seventh, and eighth. That will be reported to parents, and if teachers wanted to choose to also, again, report how they're currently doing, how we've been over the years, that they could continue to do so, and I would support that. that as an option.
Okay. Al?
So, yeah, I've thought about this a lot, and I think, you know, when Jim said something about us being cautious but progressive, I am cautious, because I really want this system to succeed. And so, just from an outsider point of view, when I'm looking at the eighth grade, and the eighth grade is not where the sixth and seventh are in terms of the competencies, at least is my impression, and it kind of comes through here, the way you're putting it. So, right now, the seventh graders, for the most part, they're getting grades, right, and then there's a couple of competencies. So that group is going to shift over to eighth grade, and under this current system, it doesn't look particularly different.
Right.
But I just, this, I, I don't, I just don't see the direction the eighth grade is going here. So I, I would prefer that the year be used, and I think your special ed person at the workshop--
Yeah.
--summed it up, great, which is, unfortunately for eighth graders, you got the tough position. It's kind of like that transition that we had from the fourth graders and the fifth graders, where we spent so much effort trying to align mathematically, school-wise, they have that task now, and it's made more difficult, because the high school hasn't really gotten the competencies, oops, I'm sorry, Maria, that it's kind of this nebulous thing that they're working towards, so they're kind of the tip of the spear, trying to figure this out. So, I want more direction of where the eighth grade is going. And so, what I'm thinking is, yes, this year for the eighth grade, or this coming school year for the eighth grade, really is getting all of the eighth grade teachers really on board with a thorough understanding of how they're going to use competencies, that's the first part of it. And the second part is, what does that hybrid system look like? Because, I mean, you just mentioned it with National Honor Society, when you hit freshman year in high school, grades matter. So, I mean, is a, is a meets, an A, I mean, so what does that system look like? We don't have that yet. So, that's the other piece, which is, what does that hybrid transitional piece look like between eighth grade and ninth grade? Really, what should be happening, and that's kind of your number six, is the beginning talks between the eighth grade and ninth grade teachers of sitting down together, what is this going to look like, how are we working towards it? So, I really see this as kind of a working year for the eighth grade, where they all get on the same page, and they begin to hammer out the work that the sixth and seventh graders have done on the report card, that's what their work is. So, I just, this feels to me like it's kind of like, well, we're, we really, you can do this, or you can do that, we don't really have a focused direction of where we're going. And I far would rather see that being the goal, and I hope that makes sense.
I would just clarify, in terms of my position on that, is that, again, the entire school will be reporting with the draft progress report that has been shared with you, and then if we're teachers that wanted to work in both worlds, that we will give them the option to do that. Because again, there's, keep in mind, there are eighth grade teachers who are very supportive and want to just do the competency work next year, and I want to be fair to people that if they want to do both, kind of look at that, it might be a good, you know, a good study to get feedback from those people who, you know, did the competencies like everyone else, and also continue to grade like we have.
Yeah.
They would, I think, be a good subject to kind of share feedback after the year.
Everybody is going to have to do the competencies, period, because it's like the sixth and seventh coming in are doing it, those students, I mean, the sixth graders, or the fifth graders that are now working their way up, they're going to have lived in the competency world by the time they hit the eighth grade. And so, I would hope, by the time they hit the eighth grade, that we've built that transition. And again, like, the, the teachers that want to do the competencies, that have worked on the competencies, well, they're already there, but we have to get everybody on the eighth grade comfortable with the competencies--
Yep.
--because there's just no way around it.
Right.
Also, I think the other issue is, I mean, they can work on the hybrid model, but I think that even the people who did the competencies, who liked the competencies, have to still wrestle with what does an effective, usable competency-grade transition system look like? And all of them haven't developed it, they all need to be on the same page, and I think that's really, that's our, our task.
So, I'm not even disagreeing with you, Al, I think that the idea here on five and six is to do that work. For example, Bedford High School is using competencies, but they use an alphanumeric grading system. So, in investigating this model, it's not like we're going to create it from whole cloth, we have other schools--
No.
--who have already done this, and so having the eighth and ninth grade in particular do visits to Bedford and get a sense of what's going on in that kind of hybrid model is really important, and, you know, there will be other pieces of research the eighth and ninth grade need to do together, which is what I was trying to do in six, is blend the efforts of the eighth and ninth grade together--
Yeah.
--and so they're moving in concert with each other.
I just would like to see, when we get, because the report was at the end, you know, you're going to report at the end of the 17-18 year, that, that when we get to the report for the eighth grade, we're kind of like, okay, we tried to do competency with a grade on the side, and this is what didn't work about it, that we've made some progress in what that blended system--
Mm-hmm.
--that we've kind of pushed the ball down, that we don't just say, well, this didn't work, or that worked, or, you know, that we've begun to investigate what that looks like.
I'm still not clear on something.
Yeah.
Okay. So, somebody in eighth grade reports this, and they have, they have a grade, you know, they don't, they don't, they're not using meets this year, right?
This year, they currently are not, no.
Not. Now, are you proposing that next year, they can do exactly the same thing?
No, I think the proposal is that they would use this progress report that's presented tonight in your packet, but they could also--
So they have, so they're, so they can't continue with what they did last year, they have to essentially use a hybrid or dual reporting system, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's your proposal.
So, at their option, yes, yep.
Okay. Then I have trouble with this, that's not the way I understood it.
Can I say something?
Oh, go ahead, Mary.
Go ahead. You know, my, I'm certainly going to support your efforts, and I think with the technology we have today, it's a great organizational tool for teachers to have the meet. What I'm worried about is number two, I've been through this before, it was about 15 years ago, but still, it wasn't this complex, it was a rubric type of report card that we changed to. Parents didn't throw rotten eggs at us, they went for tomatoes or something. But, the whole thing went over like a lead balloon, because number two, to inform parents is not enough, to get them to buy into this is a tricky part. And as I say, this district went back to the ABC rather than having the board, I won't be here on the 18th, so you're welcome, to, to the consequences, but I'm really worried about the number two.
Well, that would be my responsibility, to make sure we do a great job with that with our parents.
Denise?
So, I'm just, yeah, I, this is, I guess, what I kind of had in mind, you know, my, my thinking, as I've been really thinking this over, and all the information and everything, and I can support the grade six and seven switching over, I feel like we're at a place where I'm comfortable to do that. My thinking with the eighth is, if we think of it sort of as a natural progression, you know, right now, making that switch, it would be completely new and different for that eighth grade group, not having experienced it before, because right now, who, what grade is doing it in part, and they're not doing it in all the core subjects, again?
We're doing it entirely in fifth grade, we're doing it entirely in mathematics.
Right.
People are piling it this year in science, social studies, and language arts, in the areas. And then, you know, in all the humanities and arts, they're using a competency-based system. The only grade levels who are not currently fully implementing competencies on a report card are grade six, seven, and eight, and that's in science, social studies, and language arts.
Right.
And that's been a choice, and the reason why that has happened is that I've given the flexibility in the past two years to kind of work through, get professional development, to be ready for this, and I've always shared with the staff, the goal was to fully implement and pilot as an entire school for this upcoming fall.
Right, so, so again, my thinking is, if we introduce it, sixth and seventh, then what happens is that group of students gets used to that new system.
Yeah.
And so, naturally, then, we can, to me, look at eighth grade, not this year, but the following year, because by then, all those seventh graders will have already had the system in all the subject areas. The other issue I have with the, the idea of the eighth grade teachers having the option of doing both, is that, then that gives the eighth grade teachers basically exclusive right to define what an A is and what a B is, in terms of the meets and the beginning and all of that. You know, I'm kind of really saying, whoa, if eighth grade teachers as an option get to do this, then they get to set that standard, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. So I, for me personally, this is just where I'm sitting right now, I feel like we need a year to, to go forward with this, full steam ahead, grade six and seven, put on the brakes for eight, they report traditional grades, and they can do behind-the-scenes work, but I don't, I don't want to see like the dual, the dual grades, that's just me.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for IT, but when you do dual things in Power School, and again, the good news is, we shared a couple of weeks ago, that we have an updated version of Power School, that's going to be much more user-friendly for parents, students, and teachers, et cetera, when you use a competency-based system. But again, that's, that's really kind of a tricky thing, and I don't want to speak in terms of IT. I just would add too, I mean, we do have eighth grade teachers who are willing and want to implement for next year, so it's kind of like a tricky thing. So, when we don't implement, and I'll support whatever, do whatever the board requests of me, we're going to have teachers who want to implement, and we're telling them that they can't. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but--
It does. My thought, I'm just also, as a, you know, because I am a middle school parent, it's like, I, as a middle school parent, we're going to get used to reading the competencies, and so I, ultimately, you know, if, if I've had my kid go through sixth grade, and I've looked at the competencies, and they've gone through seventh grade and looked at the competencies, and I get to eighth grade, and I'm like, okay, what does this mean? You know, and I'm going to have to, so it's just, I, I'm, I just don't, we just don't have the system that we want, and I don't want to discourage the teachers who've done the competencies, because, as I said, they're all going to have to do it. It's like, it's part of, systemically, what the middle school is, we just have, I mean, so that part of their daily toil, as Dennis always mentions, that's got to be there. We just don't have the reporting system that's right. And I, I'm thinking, we do really have a year, because the seventh graders moving on, they've already been in this, I mean, is it possible that we could do it, and let the people, and I, this is messy, for a year, but the teachers that really want to do the competencies, that they're able to do the competencies on the report card, and the teachers that want to do, I mean, because they're not on the same page, it's pretty clear, and it's like, I want, they got to be on the same page in terms of what they're going to do. We, it seems we need a year to get there. I don't want to discourage the teachers--
Right.
--who want to do it. I want the teachers who have said they don't want to do it, to get comfortable with it and use it, and then they come together in a blended system, and I'd like to think how--
I would just say that, I mean, as principal, I get, I've already given them two years, everybody, the entire faculty. If the board would like to give the eighth grade teachers another year to be ready to fully implement, so that would be in the fall of 2018, I'm okay with that. But again, I just share that there are eighth grade teachers who are ready to do this and want to do this next year. As Dr. Morse knows in our hires, we've hired people with some experience and are excited about coming in, even in eighth grade, like our new LA teacher who you nominated or approved tonight, is excited to come in and work with competencies. And then, you know, sometimes there's even staff shifts with, you know, what's, an eighth grade teacher might want to be a seventh grade teacher two years down the road, so it's a very kind of, it's kind of complicated, but--
Yeah. Can I just, one of the difficulties I have is, and I, I'm concerned that the district is locking into an idea, that if you're going to have competencies and grades, which you're going to have to have in high school, I think, that the answer is this dual system, which seems clunky to me, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and I'd really be interested to see whether there's systems that don't, where you don't have to give one system and this other system, you know, it seems to me that's kind of where we're talking about. And I think if you have a year to look at how other school districts do it, whether they do this dual system, because, I mean, I don't know, you're a teacher--
I don't--
I thought, oh, God, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'd want to do, have to do both systems.
A functional--
You know, I don't think, because I don't think you have a hybrid system, I think you have a dual system--
Right.
--is what you're talking about. And if you, if you took a year and said, okay, let's look at Westerberg, and let's look at Marzano, and let's look at what Bedford's doing, and let's really kind of use this as a study year, to see whether you can come up with a system that's better than that, because I don't, because, yeah, well, let's, let's set in my piece, yeah?
I don't think this is going to be helpful in our making a decision, but I'm taken with, to me, the move to competencies is about learning, and we're talking a lot about grading and assessment, and of course, that's important. To me, the most important piece of it, though, is what we are doing with the competencies, and what it means when we have people who aren't comfortably at that meets, and, and that, I just, and I don't know what's the best way to do with grading, but I just want us to really keep sight that as a board, more than how we're grading our kids, I think it's important to focus on how we're educating our kids, and how we're, how we're dealing with kids who easily meet and need to be further stimulated, and have more challenge, and how we're dealing with kids that are struggling, and, you know, the RTI that we hear, and--
Yep.
I don't know about the--
I mean, I would say that's why, you know, I'd like to move to a system like that, to at least try it.
So, I, honestly, I would prefer, in this, I would rather have all the eighth grade
teachers hate me at this point, but it's like, I would prefer, if we're going to say, you know, everybody, everybody is going to do the competencies, and then if you want to do grades, so be it, I would prefer that they all did, you know, the competency, and then whatever in the margin put the grade.
Yep.
Because, again, I don't, I know it's clunky, and I know it's horrible system, but that group, and as Tom is saying, their real push is to investigate what does the appropriate transitional competency assessment system that has, what does that look like? And that's really their task for the year. I think that's the major thing that we're trying to accomplish, and it's like, they're all going to have to have a competency-based work. You know, I, that system does seem extremely clunky to me, but if, you know, I want the eighth grade teachers to be on the same page, and it's like, this way it sets up here kind of is divided.
So what would you like?
So, I really, honestly, I, I think I would prefer, I mean, the major thing is I want them to investigate what the model they're going to use in the 2018-19 year looks like. I honestly would rather them, again, I don't think that half of your staff is quite ready or on the competency page, so, I don't know, I don't have an answer to it.
Well, I mean, what about something like, we approve, I'm just thinking out loud, maybe I'm not thinking, I'm just talking out loud, that essentially, we approve, a lot of this, we approve.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, I don't, I mean, I would speak for self, I think, I think the sixth and seventh grade, you know, that's pretty much, you've gotten this, and I think done a terrific job of getting consensus among those people to move ahead with that. I think the reporting system, I think you've agreed that you're going to have this rigorous investigation.
Yep.
I'm just thinking, if we took a year to get the eighth grade to some point of agreement on how, either they're going to go with the competency system as the rest of the grades use, or else they're going to find some system where they're, which exists in other schools, where they're incorporating competencies with, with a grade as a transitional, and take a year to figure that out. I don't, I mean, that would seem to be work for me, but--
Right. Okay, it sounds like really what you're talking about is, we want to establish the goal that the eighth grade aligns with the high school ultimately.
Right.
And the high school is still at least a year away from having a system that they would align with, and I think Kenny was really beginning-- And I think Kenny was really beginning to address this, is that there's the, the issue of kind of wrestling with the concept of competencies and how you're going to assess them and becoming comfortable with that. And then ultimately, the part that we're talking about here is how, in the end, you report out that progress.
Right.
And what Jay and these, has proposed at the sixth and seventh grade level is really a, you know, the, what we would call the, the competency-based reporting model, where you're talking about competencies in terms of level of mastery of those competencies. State law requires that all high schools have competencies, and the idea is that you are utilizing those competencies in your assessments, and how you ultimately report out in terms of whether it's a grade or, or some other type of designation is a local control item. But the, the need to link the two things, the competency and the assessment with the grade, is, that, that's, that's required.
Yeah.
And so what we need to do is, we need to challenge, if we're, if our goal is to say, we want the eighth grade aligned with the high school system, they still need to start doing the, the work of wrestling with the competencies and so forth. I mean, one of the things that, that, you know, the, the very articulate teachers on that PLC that have been in here, what they haven't been telling you is, they've been living in two worlds all this last two years. That, that's what they've been doing to master this, because part of what you have to do is, you have to kind of dabble with one and kind of get a sense of, okay, what does it mean in my world that I understand, and how can I translate that into a new system? So I, I don't see how you can have a transition year that doesn't involve dabbling in both worlds. And I think what Jay is proposing is really asking the eighth grade to begin to dabble in the competency world and to begin to wrestle with that, but have the ability to say, okay, and, yeah, your, your child is competent in all these things, and that would translate into the traditional grade of an 87, or, or a B+. And I think that's what we're trying to do. So I think that's what you, what I'm hearing from you, is we want eighth grade ultimately to align with whatever system the high school has, and we just don't have that system articulated yet, but we definitely want to push them in the direction of competencies.
So my issue with having the dual system is that teacher A could decide, because we, we have not defined yet what, say, progressing means, okay? So teacher A could say, my progressing means C. Teacher B could say, progressing is B. And so that's my, I'm nervous, because then those individual teachers, by default, are going to be defining, oh, you know, progressing means B, or progressing means C, and, and it's not all school that decides that. So that's, I, I always would rather, to be honest, I would rather see eighth grade switch completely to competency-based like everybody else, than to have them do both, because that's my nervousness, is because then teacher A and teacher B have all this power to decide the equivalent of, and, and, you know, or even the meets, like maybe one teacher says, as long as they get a B, that's a meet, this other teacher says it has to be an A to meet, I mean, you know, so I, I'm really, really not comfortable with that. My ideal, honestly, like I say, my ideal is that eighth grade takes a step back, but barring that, then my, my next preference is to just have everybody switch over.
Michael, do we currently, with the current grading system, eighth grade have a way of standardizing what an A or an A minus means from one teacher to the next?
No.
So I don't see that this is any different or worse than that, and potentially better. It, it at least provides a somewhat objective scale on which to, to measure, right? An A isn't always an A.
I mean, what I value in this system is that we're being very transparent, and probably sick of hearing me say this, of being very transparent in terms of what we want the kids to learn and be able to do, and when they can't do that, what are we going to do about it? And again, the example I give is, in mathematics, we're looking at competencies to make sure we're helping the students who might be struggling in certain competency areas. Again, the goal is to do it throughout the academic year, but actually helping those students to make sure they're ready for the following academic year, and they're competent in all the areas that we want them to be in mathematics. So, but you are right, Michael, I mean, the difference between, you know, teacher X and teacher Y in terms of what a B could mean, that's, that's really kind of up to them. One of the exciting things about this is that making sure our teachers collaborate together and have those discussions, you know, for next year, during the year.
I, I think a two-tier system isn't, or a dual system is not a, not a bad thing. If we, if we think that there's value in competencies for sixth grade and seventh grade, there probably is also value in adopting competency-based reporting for eighth grade. And asking them to, or giving them the option of continuing with the letter grade system isn't creating any more work than asking them to go to competencies, than saying, you can continue your current system if you want, please also adopt the competencies.
Two questions. One, we're talking in a lot of general terms about the eighth grade teachers. In terms of numbers, I, I believe there's a, maybe a couple of retirements, and you have a, you have one group that's really, it sounds like invested themselves in, in bringing to competencies. Another group that is more resistant, perhaps. How many are we talking about in either?
Well, not to be specific, but when we did the vote, the vote in support of the progress report that you have in your packet tonight, the vote was 47 to nine. Nine teachers across the school were opposed. You know, there were, you know, I would say, a handful of eighth grade teachers who do not want to make the change towards competencies. Some have spoken to me, are excited about making the change towards competencies, and some would, I know one teacher in particular who I have great respect for, is supportive of it, but would, is not supportive of it, but would be if we had an exemplary. But again, we kind of talked about that in regards to, we kind of want to get it down in terms of the, like a three-point scale right now, before we start talking about what does exemplary really, you know, look, look like.
Okay.
So that's really how it kind of breaks down, a school, 47 to nine.
So it was seven to two, in high, among, among the, the eighth grade teachers, was...
Yes, yeah, it was seven to two, and I, you know, I don't, I don't want to be specific about any certain individuals, because I respect what they're, but I, I do know, I mean, two eighth grade teachers are retiring. I'm not going to share what their vote was, but...
So I guess one of the things that I'm a little uncomfortable with is if we go with the, the optional dual system at the discretion of individual eighth grade teachers, I'm not sure how to answer the question, you know, why did my eighth grade student get two different sets of grades, and my neighbor's eighth grade student only got competencies, or vice versa?
Right.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either. Maybe the reason why I say that, it's just, you know, if there are some teachers who want to continue to use a dual system, we're giving them the flexibility to do that if they choose for the upcoming year.
Well, and I, and I guess, to that point, to me, a grading system, and I'm not talking about the evaluation process, I'm talking about what is reported to parents and students. It, it exists to inform those parents and students. So I feel like, I acknowledge everything that's been said in terms of, you know, transition and, you know, getting up to speed and learning more. At the end of the day, I think we really owe it to those parents and students to, to come up with something that is, at the very least, consistent.
Yes.
And so whether that's skipping a year for eighth grade, or going all competencies, I would say, I would prefer either of those two options, as opposed to sort of the, you know, cast the dice and we'll see what the individual teachers decide they're comfortable with. And, and I want to say too, I, I definitely respect those teachers...
Me too.
Because of what we've talked about, you know, more than, than, than we do, of course, but, you know, they're in a position where they're sending kids into the high school, and I, and I definitely respect the, you know, either the sense of lack of readiness or, you know, resistance to, to the change because of what they feel like they know is best. But at the same time, I think a lot of what we're talking about is, is how we are conveying the progress of students to those students and their parents.
Yeah, I think Jason Duff, the special educator, and again, he works in seventh and eighth grade, he loops. I think he eloquently said it, you know, using a competency-based approach, we'll be more transparent actually when we transition our eighth graders to high school, that those teachers will kind of know what their strengths and weaknesses are. And ideally, we would want to, you know, improve those weaknesses prior to getting to the high school. Then, for example, if we, you know, if a kid goes up to the high school and has a C- minus in Spanish, what, what does that mean that they can do or can't do? So I think, again, it'll be a little bit more transparent, but...
My, my question was, is, is a meets that transparent?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think it's, it's a pretty big category, in which you're going to have a lot of people, a lot of varied ranges of performance in that.
Yep.
So, so I mean, I think that's something that's going to have to be investigated, because I think, you know, we hear this transparency issue, but I think, if somebody gets an 80 on a math test, and somebody gets a 99, and you're going to give them both a meets, and you're saying, this is transparent, I don't think so.
I would just say, I think the most important aspect of this progress, this report is when you see a meets and you can actually see the competency. So if it's beginning, you know, you would look at, you know, again, I'll just pick out a ELA, Reads and Comprehends Independently Proficiently, you know, there is some subjectivity in terms of that, the teachers collaborating together on that. But if it's a beginning, it's telling the parents, you know exactly where your child might be having some challenges with, in that subject area. So I think that's the most important aspect of it, in terms of the transparency.
So, I, you know, when you said you want, they have to dabble in both things, that's what I really want them to do this year, because as you're saying, you're, what is the basis for the letter grade? Well, it's the competencies. They have to figure out, how do you translate the competencies into a letter grade? And again, Tom's kind of alluding, a kid who meets, is that an A, or is that a B? What is that? So there's, that whole system that they're going to have to work on, I think the only way, I mean, you can look at how other schools do it, but I think, in some ways, you, you said, just do it. Well, by dabbling in both of them, you're going to find out what, how it works, what's really cumbersome and ineffective, and coming up with a better system. So I think this year, going forward, and Jim wrote this, it was just like, the eighth grade will work with the high school to investigate how to report competencies, and have a report in 18, 19. I mean, I see this next year with them struggling on how to do that. How does the competency translate into the grade that's going to translate into the ninth grade system? And that's, so it doesn't stop the teachers who want to do competencies, because they, they, I mean, they have to, the competencies isn't enough. They have to figure out how it translates into the grade system and the...
Or numeral, really, that's the key.
Or the number, whatever.
It's really, it's, because when you say, you know, a B minus, a B minus could be 80, or A1, or 82, maybe 83, but those are all kind of averaged together, so that's...
But they have to figure that out, and then the people who were the grades people have to figure out the competencies that provide the basis, or the, the structure for their grades. So each of those two different, I don't, I'm not going to call them a different camp, but thought processes are, are going to have to work through the process this year, coming up to figure out how those two elements fit together. And I, I think that it doesn't stop the teachers who want to use competencies, because they're going to use them, and it, the teachers who wanted to use the grades, well, they're going to have to pick up the competencies also. So both of them are going to have to work towards some kind of a system, and again, I'm hoping that this year is where you do dabble in both, you kind of learn the pain or the, the work of how they fit together.
But to Dan's, oh, I'm sorry, why don't you go first? Go ahead.
So I, I spoke before about learning and emphasis on learning, and then also want to raise, kind of, one of our big goals is the mental health aspect, too. And kind of hearing discussion, hearing people saying both sides, I, I actually feel, if we go to competencies across the board here in junior high, which, ju, middle school's incredibly tough time emotionally for kids. It's, you know, if you talk to parents in our district, knowing as a physician, I'm sure both Jay and Todd, your experience there. Middle school is where kids are just making this tremendous transformation. And to me, feeling what, really, what does it matter if a kid got an A or a B in middle school? Really, what I want to do is, I want to make sure they learn what they need to learn in middle school. And then if we could unweight that mental health aspect of, oh, that person got an A and I only got a B, and I need to work for the A, and it doesn't even mean you're working to learn, you're working for the grade, I think we're doing our kids a service by saying, let's go competencies across the board through eighth grade, let's work and do the work we need to do in the high school. But I think it's going to improve both mental health of our kids, and I think it's also going to keep, I, there's this quest for learning that happens, and you see that in elementary school, and kids love to learn. And as, I think as grades get mixed into that, you lose that love for learning, and you start getting this love for a grade. And I know that was, that was me. I'd rather get the A than learn, and I figured out easy how to do that. I think we could have kids better prepared for high school, better emotionally stable by going through that competency.
Yeah, and that's my goal, and the people who have worked in both worlds, meaning, you know, the numbers and letter grades, as well as competencies, that's what they report back to me, that the focus is on learning now. And again, I'll mention Jason Duff, the special educator, I mean, he eloquently, again, said that that's what he sees his kids, particularly with his IEP students, that they're focused around what they need to learn, not about earning points and grades and things like that, so...
So Jay, the, the high school is, has, has identified their competencies, and Suzanne's goal for the high school next year is that they're going to align assessments to their competencies. So if we want to create a bridge year where the eighth grade is working with the ninth grade, then they're going to continue to work on the competencies they've already developed, but with a specific mission about how would it look in a high school to report competency? So giving, you know, given the discussion of the board tonight, I don't think it would be harmful to the process for the eighth grade to be connected to the ninth grade and do that investigation, because the high school has to do this investigation anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So the standards they built, the competencies they built, the assessments they're building, all still would be in place. The issue would be, what would a high school reporting mechanism look like in a competency world? And the discussion we've heard many, many times at the board level is about eighth grade being that transition grade. So the reason I put that down for Al is because I thought, you know, a year for the, for the eighth grade to tie their horses to the high school to do that investigation only delays the reporting process for the work you've done. It doesn't delay the work, because the work is ongoing. They already identified their competencies.
Yes.
They've already identified their standards. They've already begun the process of doing your assessments. You're about a year ahead of the high school. So hitching the eighth grade horses to the high school simply means you're delaying a reporting process, not all of the work you've done for two and a half years. So, you know, my recommendation of the board tonight is, give the eighth grade the study year to work with the high school to figure out what an alphanumeric grading system looks like in a competency-based world. Because I agree, and I've said this since we started this work, the high school is going to end up with some form of alphanumeric grading, you know, and we do have models out there that we can look at. So, and algebra already takes up two-thirds of our kids. So it does make sense to me that the eighth grade would hitch its horses to the high school in a transition year.
So, so under, under that recommendation, the eighth grade would do what this year?
They would continue to do all the work that they've been doing on competencies, standards, and assessments, but then as Suzanne moves her staff toward the assessment work, she's also got to move her staff towards the reporting work. And so the eighth grade and the ninth grade would work in concert to figure out what that reporting would look like at a high school level. In fact, it would be a ninth through 12 issue, not just an eighth and ninth grade issue.
For the following year?
For 18, 19.
So for 17, 18, eighth grade would continue with alpha?
I would say that they've already got the standards, the con, they've got the competencies, the place where the board really gets into, you know, it's sort of a discussion around what happens at eighth grade. I mean, if you look at the proposal that we put on the table tonight, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, basically haven't graded much attention, communications piece notwithstanding, and it all boils down on what we want to do at eighth grade. I think Al has articulated, you know, I think as well as anyone, that they need... I think Al has articulated, you know, I think as well as anyone, that they need to stay the course, but is it necessary for them to leap to the grading system of grade, grade six and seven? Or do we want them to look at the grading system that ultimately is developed at the high school? That's really the issue and I don't think that's going to be resolved tonight. And I think that other than that one issue, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
And that's why I put it out there for consideration to give the, the year to the eighth grade to work with the high school to figure out what the reporting mechanism would look like at a high school. Trying to move this forward.
And it's conceivable too, that after a year, maybe if they watch how the middle school works in six and seven after year, they might say.
The eighth grade would turn right around and say.
Particularly if you add, add an exemplary cat, you know, category, they might say, hey, I think this works better for us. So, so they might, they might decide that that's the way they, I mean, so it has to go one way or the other.
Yeah, I don't know where it's going to go, but I mean, I think that there's going to be, especially, again, I'm thinking as Jim is saying, as the high school is doing their work, I mean, the high school is going to be looking down at the middle school as well and probably looking at the sixth and seventh.
Suzanne, can you give us a sense of your timeline? Because you've identified the competencies, what's your next steps?
So the faculty. So the faculty, we're working on the, the indicators or standards to match with the competencies. Next year, a big focus will be a PLCs looking at assessments, some of the, and common assessments and looking at calibrating those assessments together. So that's work that the faculty would do together to find some consistency, which, which I hear with grading and how we assess students. With that, we're also going to be visiting some schools like Bedford that have hybrid systems to get an idea of how they merge their competencies with numeric grades or letter grades and also what that means for, in a, in a high school system that has a far reaching impact on things like transcripts and GPAs and all those other elements. And so we need to really dig deeper into that and get an idea of what that means for Oyster River. So that's the work that we're going to be doing next year. So faculty will be working in PLCs on their assessment pieces and common assessments, calibration, and then we'll also have other groups working to go outside of the building to look at what other schools are doing and models that they have.
By understanding, Bedford Middle School has a competency, the grading, the middle school uses grades but aligned to competencies, is that, that's my understanding of Bedford Middle School, right?
I haven't looked at Bedford Middle School, so I don't know, but I know that there, there's different districts work with competencies in varying ways. There's hybrid models, there's, there's scaling models, one through four, there's other models like not yet competent. So if you're anything below a passing grade, you're not yet competent. There's other, I mean, there's a variety of different methods that are used and I think we just need to look at what's out there and figure out what works for our community and what works for our students.
Okay.
To, just to get specific, Dr. Morse, so if we look at what was presented to us and to look at wording to possibly change, so I'm, by what you said, I'm thinking one through four stays the same.
And I think six stays the same.
And six stays the same. Then going to five, cross off at their option. So it would read, the eighth grade core teachers will continue with the current grading consistent system, consistent with the current high school approach. Then it all continues the same, but then on the next to last line, cross off reporting. And do you cross off aligning assessment as well or do we want them to?
They would align.
No, I think you want all of that in there.
Well, reporting, reporting you would take off because we don't want.
Well, reporting, I meant reporting to you, not reporting the grading system.
Okay, I thought reporting there was grading.
But aligning assessment, the reporting at the end of the year, as Tom alluded to, the eighth grade at the end of the year may say that they want to use the sixth and seventh grade model and not use whatever the high school comes up with. So we'd get a specific, a report from the eighth grade on where they are at the end of the year. I think that that would work.
Okay, so just, just crossing off their, at their option.
It's not ideal, but it's, you know, I go under the umbrella of sometimes you get half a loaf, sometimes you get three quarters of a loaf. In this particular case, I really think we're getting everything short of two slices, which is the reporting point. Because the eighth grade is, whether they're working with the high school or whether they're working with sixth and seventh grade, the eighth grade can't walk away from the competency model because the high school has to do it.
Right.
And the sixth and seventh grade have already decided they're going down that path. So the eighth grade has to get on board with either the high school or the middle school. There's not going to be any choice in the end.
So, and recognizing, I'm not getting my whole loaf probably, but I think in the spirit of compromise, I'd like to move this forward or document as is crossing out those words in number five at their option.
And change it to 18, 19 instead of 17, 18?
I think we just have to be very clear.
Seventeen, eighteen, near Karen.
We're just talking, can I just ask a question, Kenny?
Sure.
What about, I think there's an issue with algebra. I mean, you're excluding math at all, all math classes, but it seems to be one of the issues with algebra is it's a high school course and so, but you're grading it on the, it's graded, is it graded duly now? How's it grade, how's algebra graded?
It is not, the reason why it's not graded duly is because the Algebra One teachers at the high school and middle school recently, I think in the past year, collaborated together to create the high school competencies for Algebra One. So we didn't have those, but my expectation is we would rate those competencies, again, to share that information with students and families in terms of where the kids were at in terms of Algebra One. So that is kind of like a system. What we do in world language for this upcoming year, which, you know, they use a grading system at the high school in terms of a point scale, but what we're doing at the middle school is we're determining, making sure our kids are competent and make the appropriate recommendation for them for their freshman year, whether the French two or Spanish two or they might need to repeat French one. They go to the high school with a high school credit, but there, there's no GPA or number attached to their grade, so that doesn't figure into any GPA. They just go to the high school with a, a high school credit. So, I mean, if I would prefer, I'd like to move to that system for our, again, our Algebra One students at the middle school, not for next year, but at, at some point where we're making sure our kids are competent in all the areas we want them to be in Algebra One and they go into the high school with a credit, but there's no, there's no point average or anything.
But are they given a grade, a letter grade in algebra?
Yes.
Yes, right now, yes. Sorry.
Okay. Okay.
So I think, Ken, did you make that as an amendment?
I, I. We don't have a motion, so we don't have an amendment.
Yeah, that was the motion, that was his motion. His motion was this with that change.
Okay.
And I'll, I will second that motion. So this proposal, just crossing out at their option in number five.
Just those three words?
Just those three words. So that it reads that it will continue with, eighth grade will continue with the current grading system. Oh, then ma, well, but then you're saying math, because right now it just lists the three sub, I see what the issue is, because it just lists the three subjects. And so what we should just do is eliminate that brackets, eighth grade core teachers.
Just cut off like core teachers, just say during the 17, 18 school year, the eighth grade teachers.
Or core teachers, core teachers, but not in brackets.
I think we have to be very careful and I apologize for interrupting, but again, we, when we talk about eighth grade, we do have eighth grade teachers who are using competencies. So for example, my eighth grade art teacher is using competencies. So we want to be very specific in terms of who we.
So we say core.
When you say core, but again, we're doing, we've been doing competencies in eighth grade mathematics for the past two years and it's worked well, so.
But you just said we weren't, you said we were doing the grades.
In algebra, again, we have two separate courses in mathematics in eighth grade. We have Algebra One for high school credit, then we have eighth grade Common Core Mathematics, who's been using competencies for the past two years.
Okay, so if you just said the eighth grade core teachers will continue with, that would do it, right?
Or just say during the 17, 18 year, we will continue with the current grading system.
So whatever they're doing now.
Whatever you're doing.
Well, no, because six and seven is.
I meant for eighth grade, just eighth grade, continuing. And my other question then is like.
We'll continue with whatever they're doing.
Right.
My other question then is, does that also mean, or can we incorporate, because you're going to be building these PSLs over at the high school, that some of the eighth grade teachers can then be part of the PSL at the high school?
Yeah, so what we can do is invite, is invite the middle school faculty to come with us when we visit schools. I can, Jay and I communicate regularly, so I can communicate with him and let him know what, what we're doing and what we're working on and then whatever seems to fit naturally to be able to, to reach this goal, we can make sure that we align.
So Jay, if they say current grading practices, then that takes care of your math people, it takes care of your art, music, phys ed people, right?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll just say current grading practices?
Current eighth grade, eighth grade.
Eighth grade, current grading practices.
Okay.
We're going to put a date on it when, so we'll, we'll make another decision a year from now to make sure, I mean.
They have a reporting obligation at the end of the year.
Yep.
Just, just so I make sure the board is aware, obviously by doing this, the uniformity of the report format will be somewhat lost. So it will still, for next year, it'll, for next year, for the eighth grade, it will still have that funkiness about it that we've been dealing with this year. So I just want to.
The current practice.
Right.
Okay. So can you read, so, so we have one, two, three and four unchanged, correct? We have six unchanged and could, if you read five as you would want it, Kenny?
Edit, during 2017 dash 2018, the eighth grade teachers will continue with their current grading system. Knock out the rest of that and then pick back up, it is further understood that the eighth grade staff will fully participate with their middle school peers in all competency work, including aligning assessment, reporting and professional development.
Okay. So I know we had a, you know, I'm wondering if we, you can, we can, I know if you, did you move it prior with a different wording?
I'll, I'll move it with this current, I'll withdraw what I suggested. I'll move it forward now with this current wording.
And I'm, I seconded it and I'm fine with that.
Okay, so you draw your previous second or your new second? Okay, now we have a motion on the floor to, to approve all six of these points with five amended as Kenny just amended it. Okay, are we clear?
Clear.
Yeah, and I, can I just say one more thing? Which I, I really do appreciate, I just feel like it's better to move slowly and cautiously. I just, that's my thing and I know that it's going to kind of create a little bit more of a headache this year, but I, I really do feel it's important to kind of move slowly on this so we get it right, I guess is my feeling about it, so, anyway.
And I, I know this has felt like.
Yeah.
Some degree adversarial, but I think that what's hap, what you've done is amazing.
Thanks.
I mean, you, and I've been a skeptic as you know, but I, clearly you brought a group of very independent minded teachers to, to this, you know, certainly the sixth and seventh grade and maybe progressively in eighth grade as things evolve. And that's just a hell of an achievement. I mean, it really is.
Thanks.
And, and, and I think that the PLC, I, I've got such admiration for those people and I think Aaron Wardy asked the same question, answered the same question, I suppose, Ty, they did a fabulous job, Jay.
Yeah, thanks.
So I think that, you know, I don't, I hope this doesn't feel like, you know, just, you know, being obstructionist or skeptic. I think, I think you've really done a great job and I think what we're saying is this, it's going to take a year to figure this other one out. And I think at the end, it may be that they come on board with the, you know, system. And if that's the case, then it's, it's something that they choose and they something invest in as opposed to something that I think is to some degree put against people who are reluctant to do it.
Right.
So I think, I just think that, that you should be feeling really positive about something and you've really worked hard to convince a lot of us, including me.
Yeah.
So congratulations.
Well, no, I admire all the work you do and there's, you know, whenever you're trying to implement some kind of change, I mean, I think when you have challenging dialogue, I think that's appropriate. And as Val Wolfson, you all know her, the social studies teacher, she would always tell me like, Jay, democracy is messy, you know, and, but that's, you know, I appreciate, you know, all your efforts, please know that too.
So, Elliot?
So we've talked a lot about what we do with eighth grade. We've touched on a tiny bit, the three tier versus four tier marking system. And I, I guess I, my bias is still that I think there's value in, in the, using a, having a above meets classification in terms of recognizing work beyond the standards and, and motivating students to have that capability. So I would, I would be very interested in considering going ahead and adding that now as opposed to waiting for a year or more.
So in that, Michael, I mean, I'm, I agree with you. I mean, when I started this whole process, I thought it'd be a four point scale. But then, you know, as superintendent, I have to be cautious because, you know, I don't want to impose my will on the teaching staff. So the teaching staff have done, have done their work for the last two years and by huge margin, they want to go, what they want to start out with a three point scale. So it's not even close. And, you know, when that, when I saw that vote, I said, well, you know, I disagree with that consensus, but that's where they want to be for this first year. So I would encourage the board to kind of get in the same place I am and accept the fact that we have a group of professionals who've made a recommendation to us and, and I haven't imposed my will as superintendent and I would ask the board to not do so. At this juncture, as they start out, let them implement the grading system as they've recommended it. And the idea from the teachers and from Jay is we have all of these focus groups, we'll have all of this feedback from the parents. And if the parents in the, in the students naturally come to the place of, we want a status of exemplary or some other, you know, word along those lines, then they've, they've grown through the process. I'm, I know I'm hesitant as a superintendent when I have that kind of consensus to say, this is what I want. I want you to do a four point scale. So I'd ask the board to, to take that into consideration and not change the recommendation on the scale just because the staff has been so consistent in that throughout.
Just to add one more thing, just based on the presentations and the interactions we've had with the staff on numerous occasions, you know, I, I think what I've heard from them is that they have invested a lot of their energy and dialogue around this very issue and that they've come away feeling like the, the three tiered system is the right place to start and that they're not locked into that. And so this is, you know, it's been said multiple times, this is sort of an evolution and that there is certainly opportunity to make that change. But, you know, given what Dr. Morse just said, I, at this point, I'm more comfortable supporting where, what they feel is the best place to start, knowing especially that there is opportunity and there, and there will be dialogue and examination over the course of the next year and then some. So I feel comfortable with this, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to go with their, their consensus on that.
I just, you know, I've probably been raised the issue more than anybody and I, and I still think that down the road, this might, you know, there might be a movement to, to having the exemplary category or whatever it's termed.
Yeah.
But I kind of feel like they've worked so hard to build this plane and they got to, they got to fly it.
Yeah.
You know, they have to see how it works. And for us, for us to, for me to superimpose my judgment on something that they've worked so hard to get, build consensus around at this point, I'd say, no, try it. See if it works, be honest with us if there, if you get the feedback like, you know, we need more distinction, we need more categories, you know, then, then I think then we have a basis for making a change as opposed to me or, you know, us, us kind of, you know, imposing our judgment again against theirs. So that's. It's, it took me a while to get to that point, but I think that's where I am right now.
I have one quick thing. I, I, first of all, I am really happy, what I've seen is that as the district, we've become more systemic and that we, I mean, five years ago, I can remember there was this angst over the transition between fourth and fifth and there's just been a tremendous quantity of work.
You don't hear it, yeah.
At solving that. And then in terms of the competencies, I mean, I, I mean, my earth science classes were filled with just oodles of kids at risk and I, I really like the mechanism of having clearly defined things and also a, you know, a robust RTI system in place that really are able to quickly identify that. I mean, when I look at the middle school, honestly, I have a middle school, I'm, grades really don't mean a whole lot to me. It's skill level and, and building a big foundation. And I think that, again, I, I'm really impressed with the work that, that's been, that's gone on, it's great. And I think that, you know, as I'm looking forward that, you know, transition from that eighth to ninth, it's going to be really exciting. What you guys build really, you're building a systemic thing now, all the way from the transition from four, five, the heart of the middle school and then what it looks like again, what this next thing is going to be. So I think it's exciting, I think it's.
Yeah, that's, I give you my words, I promise you Suzanne and I work very hard together to. to make sure we're doing what's best for our students.
So are we ready to vote on this? Okay, so just to, I think recap, one through four and six are stated here, and just, would you redo last time, do you have it? I don't know where I put it. You've got it?
Maybe Laura could.
I can do it if you want, I've got it.
Okay.
Kenny, I've got it right here. You want me to do it?
Sure.
Don't wanna steal your thunder.
I don't need thunder.
During the 2017-18 year, the eighth grade will continue the current grading practices, period, and then the rest of it's the same, it's further understood that the eighth grade staff will fully participate with the middle school peers in all competency work, and including aligning assessment, reporting, and professional development.
So that's five, and then six, six is, is, are we ready to vote on this?
Indeed.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand, seven in favor, the student rep in favor, okay. I think we're down to policies. Yeah, Kenny?
So, there are two easy ones, so I'd like to just move those as a slate, the policy DKC, expense reimbursement in form, and policy DKA, payroll process, and these were just two policies that are kind of aligning with what we're doing now, and also firming up the bed expense reimbursement, particularly meals when people are at conferences, so in your packet, you should have copies of those.
So, I'm sorry, say it one more time?
So there, there, policy DKA, which is payroll process, and policy EKC, which is expense reimbursement, and so those, there were no changes from those for what was in the packet, or what's in your folders tonight.
And they are first read.
Okay.
And they're first.
Okay, move those two for first read, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second Denise, discussion? None, okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand, seven in favor, approve for first read.
And then, I would move for first read, policy DK, which is payment manifest, and I would ask you to take out what was in your blue folder, as there was changes made, and in that policy, it wasn't unanimous, it was a two-to-one vote, bringing it forward with the change as listed reflecting, which you'd see on DKR, the R, under School Board Action, where what we're doing is we're just having two people, rather than four people, so that, that is the change in the policy, so I move DK and DKR, which we don't usually do, but move those for first read.
I know, second it.
Move by Kenny, seconded by Denise. I'd just like to speak in favor of this, I think four is more than we need, I think two, particularly as, from the standpoint of the chair, getting, getting those, making sure those people are available, and available over the summer, and I think it just makes it much more efficient from my standpoint, and I think it's, it's adequate, too, so I would support it.
I will speak against it.
Really?
Really, I will. We're talking big bucks, and, as far as I know, one of my biggest responsibilities is a fiduciary, I love that word, don't use it very often, fiduciary responsibility, and I know we work on the budget, but it's not really our responsibility, we take it to the public hearing, where it can be amended or not, and then it goes to the voters, but where we do have the fiduciary responsibility is to look over how we're spending the money, and I was told earlier today that the time spent on doing that is not very productive, and as I was driving over, I have a car that's probably ten years old, those airbags in there have not been productive at all, because I've never had an accident, so the productivity is that we're there, just in case, another check and balance, and I cannot look the taxpayers in the eye and say, yeah, thanks, forty-two million dollars, a million here, a million there, that's good money, but the school board does not feel it is productive for us to look over it, I think it is productive, because I learn a lot about how I would like to see next year's budget, there was an awful lot of drinks, plastic bottles in this year budget, I certainly am going to ask about that, and other things that I learned from going through the manifests, so, be, looking at the taxpayer and saying, the school board is responsible, and it takes a quorum of this board to be responsible, so that's my issue.
Other?
Question, we've been doing manifest review with four board members, correct?
Yeah.
Quorum.
And so, Maria, can I ask, do you feel there's some magic to four, as opposed to three, versus obviously two, you're not in favor of?
The four is the quorum of the board, so the board can say, we have done due diligence in keeping track of your forty-two million dollars, which is a lot of money.
Well, I mean, by that logic also, then really, what we should do, is all of us should be here at one time, if it's, the forty-two million dollars is the most important thing, why say, okay, we're just gonna have a quorum before at six-thirty, it's, why not, if it's of that level of importance, then everybody should be here, I just personally think, really, it's about providing oversight, I don't see that going from two to four changes the oversight, I, I just don't, I mean, I, I mean, yes, it is a quorum at four, but two, really the idea is someone is checking over the bills and looking at them, instead of just not doing it at all, so I, I don't really see the problem with two.
That was my feeling when I raised the issue, I do feel that budgeting is incredibly important, and we have such a, a role to play in that budgeting, we also have audits as well, and part of the auditing process is looking at how the money is expended, and that's another check in the system, so we, we have one, our budgeting, two, we have the manifest reviews, and we've got our auditing that happens, I feel that two people, and I think to your point, Dan, I think, I think two, it's very adequate to give the kind of surveillance that we should have, and I, I don't think having four adds a higher level.
Further discussion, ready to vote?
No, the, oh, I'm sorry, just the, the only other point I would make is, and I don't know if we need to modify it at all, but obviously, to me, if one of the individuals is unable to be present, then they're, you know, obviously, as we do currently, is call someone, you know, so I, I don't know that we need to put that in there, or if, maybe it could go in the R document as a, as another, you know, as a two under School Board Action or so, I don't know, but just to clarify that, should one of the, if we do adopt this, should one of the two individuals not be available, a?
The chair's responsible for finding a substitute.
Right, so that we never, because I do agree that just having one person look at things
Yeah.
does get into an area, yeah.
You guys can just add those, and bring that in second reading.
Right, yeah, so that, that's my only thing, other than that, I think.
Could I ask a question, if the chair's not here, who opens the meeting, is this being done during a meeting, or?
The vice chair would.
Well, is she gonna be here? At six-thirty.
So the, the question is, is this done during, is the manifest, what do we call it now, manifest review committee acting during a board meeting, or, or is it a separate committee meeting?
Well, that's a good question, Michael, and so the way that we addressed it was to have the manifest meeting actually start at six-thirty, and it blends into the traditional meeting, and so the quorum is called now on the manifest, and so it's, it's not separate from the evening, it's a early beginning of the evening.
But it can't be unless it's a quorum.
Right.
So we'll just need to take out.
It has to be separate from the meeting.
So it could still meet at six-thirty, but it would be a subcommittee of the board, and a folks to continuation of the board meeting.
We could just take out, we'll meet as part of a scheduled board meeting, we can just take that out.
We'll meet prior to the scheduled board meeting.
So I'm still very much the new guy here, and I've done a manifest review exactly once so far, so I, I know there are certain things that I looked at when I was going through it, I imagine different members would look at different aspects of the invoices and the check stubs, I wonder if there's a, a better way to present that information, to make that time, that review time, more value-added for us, rather than flipping through just kind of what looked to me like a fairly random stack of paper.
Yeah, manifest, yeah.
Yeah, something like perhaps, everything that's less than, pick a number, five thousand dollars is, is listed in a tabular form, without all of the, all of the supporting backup, and everything bigger than that, we wanna see the whole invoice and the.
And that's what the town does, they have a, a cutoff point where it has to be reviewed.
Excuse me?
We've had, I mean, that question certainly is an appropriate question, it's just whether the board, whether this body wants to go down that path, and the, the way the policy is written, the way that you get the manifests, et cetera, you will see all the original bills, basically, so you're not getting copies, you're getting, that's why the pile is so thick in any given meeting, is because the policy is very clear, that you get to see everything, and the one question, sometimes Al will ask, his questions are always on, what are we spending a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars on, tonight, Dan and Denise's question was, what's this two hundred bucks about, so, you know, the questions will range from, you know, small questions to big questions, and, you know, that's a decision the board can make as well, you know, how much they wanna see, and whether you want to establish a limit, you know, not, you know, not to dissuade the board in any direction, but that fiduciary responsibility is really important, it's important for me as a superintendent, and Sue Caswell as a business manager, to make sure that the elected officials are providing oversight, because we all read stories in the paper where people have run off with public funds, and, you know, we had fantastic audits, as, as Ken alluded to, and, you know, in terms of where I wanna be as a superintendent, I always want the elected officials to be able to look over my shoulder and see exactly what the money's going for, so the issue is whether a board requires a quorum, or you can do it for less, and with less board members, the, our attorney has given us the broad range, everybody's doing everything differently, and one of the things that he had put in there was, well, in some systems where they really trust the superintendent, business manager, and I thought, no way, I mean, I know you guys trust me, I know you trust Suzanne, Susan, but I, I appreciate the oversight, because it makes me feel more comfortable as a, as your employee, to make sure the funds are expended appropriately.
Would you be comfortable with two?
I'm comfortable with two, I'm comfortable with three, I'm comfortable with four, for me, it's really a board issue, I mean, I, I, I would want you to do what you guys feel is, is appropriate, as long as somebody's doing it, that's all I care about.
So just to, just to piggyback on Michael's question, is there a current report or format that wouldn't require building a separate report, that could be generated for the board?
Not based on current policy, because your current policy says you will see the originals, so all we can do is tap the originals with a cover that says, this is what this is for.
Because I think the question is more, what, what, what could our current accounting system generate easily, as a summary of what's in there?
There is a summary.
There is.
There is a summary sheet.
It sits on the top, have you seen that?
Yeah.
It just lists the bills.
I didn't notice that in one time.
Yeah. But we do, we do a summary document.
Yeah, there is, on the top.
And I'm not sure that gives us the needed detail, but.
It, the summary document doesn't, the, the detail is the actual document, so, you know, to, and I, and I hope I'm answering your question, Michael, I, to do, go from the cover letter to something that provides more detail than what's in the, what's in the box, still doesn't get you away from the invoices, which is the pile, you know, so, you know, I'm certainly.
Could we just, I mean, we're gonna have another shot at this, right? We, and, and I think the issue is, we're talking about is like numbers, you know, that's the change in this, so, so I wonder, could you vote on this at first read, and then continue the discussion, because I have another chance to talk about it, is that okay? It's pretty late.
Talk about what?
The policy.
The policy.
Because it's just first.
It's just first read, so, so, I don't mean wanna rush it, but it's kinda late, so, could we have a vote, all those in favor of this, approving this for first read, please raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, five in favor, opposed, two opposed, okay, it's approved for first read.
And then the last policy is the field trip one, so it's IJ OA, and there's IJ OA-dash-R there as well, and basically, the, the big change here is, going through policy, it really never said that the school board needed to approve the field trips, and so this lays out a procedure whereby the building principal approves the trip with the final improvement of the superintendent, and then, not included here, but there's, it talks about liability, and how a form will be signed that takes all liability away from the school and the teachers who are leading the field trips, field trips are completely voluntary, parents let their kids go on their own volition, so I would move IJ OA for first read.
Moved by Kenny, second?
I will second that.
Second Denise?
Why is the word voluntary there?
Um, it's really, yeah, it's a really important addition, we had the policy reviewed by the attorney, what, what the attorney was saying is, we really want the parents to be on notice, that no one has to do these, that it is a voluntary field trip, meaning that if you're putting on a trip to Spain, nobody's being required to go, and it's an important distinction, according to our attorney.
Are there any mandatory overnight field trips?
Maybe not.
Okay, so it's redundant, but it's legal?
Yeah, it's, it's the advice of attorney.
It, it takes, it all deals with that liability issue, which is what, we wanted to really protect the district and the teachers who lead the trips.
The other part of this, Michael, is that when they're using private providers, which they do, of course, to organize their trips, those private providers provide liability insurance, and also have, you know, similar disclaimers, we just wanted to make sure the parents knew that those, that it's not a school-sponsored trip, it's a school-supported trip.
Sure.
And so that's the other distinction in the policy.
Ready to vote for first read? All those in favor, please raise your hand, seven in favor, the policy's approved for first read, is that, you know, does all the policies, school board committee updates, Denise?
Just real quick, the long-range planning committee is meeting on Wednesday, May 24th, to kinda look at, oops, as far as the Massway MoHaramit, kinda see if we can improve for next, next year, I guess, the formula.
The wellness committee met, I was not in attendance, but I got the minutes, and the topics were various school assessments, there's gonna be a sleep survey, I don't think it's been done yet, do you know if it's, it's hap, is it, do you know when it's gonna happen?
I just, I.
Well, then, in the next week.
Yeah.
In the next week, okay, which will give us data to compare this year versus next year, and there's a, and also the social and emotional wellness, that was a topic that was brought up, and, so, an active meeting, okay?
Sustainability met, and it was one that they asked me to meet at, and they were beginning to define what they thought they should be working on next year, and the plastic bottle issue, I put on the table, because I said it was a big issue with the board during budget season, and, so I, I think they'll. during budget season, and, so, I think, I think they'll turn around and make that one of their major goals as we enter the year, so we need a plan, and so they came up with no plan, there was lots of talk, but, no, without a plan, the board couldn't act.
And I think if it's, you know, taking money out of Doris's budget, you know, if we're gonna be serious about it, we're gonna just to, to make her whole.
Yeah, and I said that to them.
Yeah, other committee? Okay, public comment? No? Okay, our next meeting will be June 7th, and at that meeting, we'll come in with a draft of goals, so, so the big, the big topic there will be to kind of, I don't know if we'll finalize the goals, but we'll try, we'll try to get close to that point on defining our goals, okay, so I think
Before we adjourn, can I say something?
Mm-hmm.
And that is, today, we have touched on two things that are extremely important to my values, namely, religion and the Constitution, and this
How do you say money? How do you say money?
Well, that's my second one. Yeah, well, and the second one is, obviously, this policy of oversight, so, with that, I will offer my resignation, here's for Tom. Thank you. And somebody else will have to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Al, second, by Dan, all those in favor? I'm sorry to hear this, Maria.
You have to stick with your values.
Okay.